Okay, let's go ahead and call the special county commission meeting for November the 4th to order. Annette, can you do a roll call? Kim?
Fritz. Scott.
Here.
McCamey. Bowe. Wondell.
Here.
Mead.
Here.
White. Jaeger.
Here.
Smallridge.
Here.
Jamison. Creasy.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Waddell. Meredith.
Here.
Isbell. McCamey's on there. Fritz, she's the only one absent. They're all present but Fritz.
Okay, next up we'll have the prayer led by Commissioner Bowe and the pledge by Commissioner Mead.
Heavenly Father, once again, we give you honor and praise tonight, and we thank you for everything that you do for us every day. Most of all, for our salvation, for our opportunity to serve our people. Please forgive us of our sins, times God that we fail you. We ask that you be here with us tonight. We ask that you be with us in heart and mind and spirit. Give us your wisdom, your discernment, Father, to do what's best for our people. All this we ask in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Now please join me in the pledge of the flag. Hand salute to the flag wherever you are. I pledge immediately to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is Commissioner Mead.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Without a min- okay, and second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Scott.
Do we need to, do we need to connect our voting tablets for any purposes?
Uh, no, Annette's gonna do a, she's gonna do a roll call if we do take any action on anything. The, since we have to go into a different room for executive session, the, that would complicate it to have the roll call system set up. We wouldn't be able to transfer back. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to-
Alright, thank you.
We go into executive session.
Well, we need to vote on, we need to, need to do a roll call on approving the agenda. On the, yeah. Yes. Uh, two, yes, yeah.
Second, the move, the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Okay.
I had approved, or seconded that some time ago.
Kim, do you want to do a roll call?
Fritz. Oh, he's absent, isn't he? Scott.
Aye.
McCamey.
Aye.
Aye.
Bowe. Wondell.
Aye.
Denenberg.
Aye.
Mead.
Aye.
White. Jaeger.
Aye.
Smallridge.
Aye.
Jamison. Creasy.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Waddell. Meredith.
Aye.
Isbell. Fifteen yeses, one absent.
Okay. Commissioner, Waddell, do you have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to go into executive session.
A motion by Commissioner Waddell to go into, go ahead and go into executive session?
Commissioner Mead, I'd make a second on that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Kim, can you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, we'd like to have some discussion. Uh, I, I don't know this, maybe Jay can answer the question, but I recall that when we were doing these electronic formats that we're required to use a voting tablet. Um, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I just want to make sure we're not, we're following the rules and procedures, and I'm not suggesting we're not. I'm just, would like to ask the law director if he can opine on that, whether we need to use our voting tablets or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. Um, no, we need to do a roll call vote that is recorded, and we're doing that. Um, uh, you don't have to have your voting apparatus. So as long as we do a roll call vote, every commissioner can cast an individual vote, and that is recorded by Kim, and is in the official minutes, then we're okay.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Creasy?
Yes, uh, are we skipping the first item on the agenda, the COVID-19 response measures?
Uh, no, I think we're gonna come, come to that af- we're gonna go into executive session first. Um, guessing so the, the legal team can go ahead and leave, and then we'll go back, we'll come back to the, uh-
Okay. My agenda must be different. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jay, do, do you want to go over any of the rules about executive session before we take the vote?
Yes, I'll be glad to. First of all, we'll have guests with us tonight, two attorneys that have been working on the case, that are familiar with it. The only questions that can be asked are to your attorneys. There'll be no motions made, no deliberations in the executive session. If there is a motion to be made, it must be, we must return to the open session, the public session, make those motions to deliberate that issue in public. So what, what the executive session is about is the ability to ask your attorneys questions about this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question?
Yes, Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, I discovered that we needed a different access code for the executive session. By accident, when I called Brian, our IT director, because I was having trouble logging my iPad, uh, voting pad in. Uh, is all commissioners aware of the different code for the executive session?
You have an email that was sent by me about an hour and a half ago that has the instructions with the two access codes attached to it.
Right, did all commissioners get that?
Yes, sir. They all got it, including the mayor, including the sheriff, and the two attorneys.
Okay, I was left out of it. I didn't get that email read. I was trying to read them all before the meeting started, and I was running out of time reading the appeals court decision. Thank you very much. I'll log up, go to the other one.
Lot of material.
Any other discussion or questions before we take the vote? Okay, Kim, can you call the roll, please? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Mead.
Uh, Law Director, uh, do we need to have a discussion about who all is allowed to be in this meeting? This is kind of special circumstances, and there's, there are people that are directly involved in this. It might not otherwise be allowed to be in the room. For instance, some of, there's some IT people, for instance, uh, that, that wouldn't normally be in an executive session, but because of this being done online, it's a necessity to have them there. We just need, I think we need to at least acknowledge that we, we have some people in the room that might not otherwise be allowed, but are, but it's been specifically allowed by this commission. Does that sound appropriate?
We have gone over this procedure with Brian. He's assured me he's handling that. They will exit the room as usual, and Brian will control it in another location.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Kim, if you want to call the roll?
Scott.
Yeah, yes.
McCamey.
Aye.
Bowe.
Wondell.
Aye.
Denenberg.
Aye.
Mr. Mead here, aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Smallridge.
Aye.
Jamison. Creasy.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Waddell. Meredith.
Aye.
Isbell. Fifteen yes, one absent.
Hey, let's clear the room.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Do we log out of this meeting here?
Yeah. Yes, you will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
Get started again. We have any questions from commissioners or any motions? Commissioner Mead?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, that we authorize counsel to proceed with a Rule 59, motion to amend the judgment in the case of, of the Anderson County versus the Carl Clifford Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Mead, second by Commissioner Jamison. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, uh, Kim, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Fritz. Scott. Better ask. You don't say too many. McCamey.
Aye.
Bowe. Wondell.
Aye.
Denenberg.
Aye.
Mead.
Eighty-eight percent.
Aye.
White. Jaeger.
Aye.
Smallridge.
Aye.
Jamison. Creasy.
Aye.
Anderson. Waddell. Meredith.
Aye.
Isbell. Scott.
I don't believe she's with us yet. I don't see her on the screen.
Okay, we got fifteen yeses, one absent. Motion passes.
Passes, alright, next item.
She just arrived.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you will move to the second item there, uh, the Anderson County Personnel Policy Amendment. Uh, did everybody get a copy of that? I sent it out earlier this afternoon. Uh, this is in a response to, uh, an outbreak we've had of COVID-19 with our employees. We've had a severe spike, um, in the courthouse, in the sheriff's office, in the school department, in the central office of the school department. This is brought forward by Commissioner Denenberg to be on the agenda of the HR committee. Unfortunately, they didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't get a recommendation to move forward with this, uh, from the HR committee, but you have the power to adopt personnel policies, um, for our county employees. Um, again, this is sort of an emergency matter. What this is, if you look at the wording, it's not a mask mandate in any way. It's not a countywide mask mandate in any way. Only the mayor has the exclusive powers and purview to issue that countywide mask mandate. This is discretionary, and it says at the very beginning, "Elected officials and department heads shall have discretionary authority to institute protective measures." It goes forward, it talks about the need for PPP, P, personal protective equipment, the types, the type situations it should be used in, and of most important, in this case, uh, in this policy, I'm sorry, uh, if you look down to paragraph four, it says, "Notwithstanding any policy to the contrary, all employees shall have the ability to voluntarily wear PPE at their discretion when they believe it is necessary to protect the employee's health, safety, welfare, or their fellow coworkers and family members." So if any employee desires to wear PPE, they're allowed to do it under this policy at their own discretion. Or the elected official or department heads can have discretionary authority to mandate, uh, PPE in their offices. It's totally independent of, uh, it's totally determined by the elected official and department head how they want it to approach it. Uh, do you have any questions regarding this Personnel Policy Amendment?
Uh, Jay, does that, is that for all county facilities, buildings?
Yes, sir, all county employees. Now, we can't adopt a, uh, broad rule for the school department. They're under the school board's purview, but this will be for all county general fund, if you want to say that, employees outside of the school system.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, the limitation on these is one to within the constraints by the governor's emergency order. Also, uh, this wouldn't apply to private citizens visiting, as it, it's only applying to, uh, employees.
Yes, sir, very good point. Um, we do have a mask mandate issued by the Supreme Court for the areas where judicial proceedings are taking place, and also that mandate is kind of strangely worried. You ca- word, worried, if you come into the courthouse to do judicial business, you're, need to keep a mask on the entire time. But the way it's been enforced by the sheriff's office is those people going to the third floor for judicial matters. But, uh, no, it would not affect the, uh, the citizens that come in to do business at the courthouse, other than that Supreme Court order laid down. This is a Personnel Policy Amendment only. That affects our employees. Thank you, sir.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks. Commissioner Smallridge?
I'm sorry, um, yeah, I just wanted to comment, you know, there's been quite a bit, well, maybe, maybe I should, if you finish this discussion, I'll make my point later on, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of the, of the procedure that you're presenting, but, you know, my personal feeling, and I've expressed this in the past, that anyone coming into courthouse should be, uh, first addressed by the sheriff's deputy at the door, and asked, you know, the questions about, are they feeling bad, just like in a doctor's office, measure their temperature, and require them to have a mask to enter the courthouse, and to wear it the whole time they're there. Uh, if they're going to the clerk's office, they come up to the counter with their mask on. Uh, that's my personal feeling, and I think that's the way we should do it. Uh, that, I felt that way from the very beginning, if you, if you remember back earlier in the spring when I brought that up at a previous meeting. Um, as, we're employers, and, uh, and I agree with the, the procedure you put, personnel procedure you put before us, because we are employers, and it's up to us to make sure our employees are safe. Uh, we're required by OSHA to make our courthouse safe for our employees, uh, to present them with a safe working area. Uh, but I, I would prefer, I don't know if we can add it, amend this policy or, that you're presenting, uh, to include the visitors coming or, or not, but, uh, that's my personal wish. If, I don't know if others feel the same way or not, but I, that's the way I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is only dealing with their employees. That's a, a different issue. If you so decide to take that up at another time, that's fine. We can put it on the operations agenda or the county commission agenda coming forward, but this only applies to our employees. It's a Personnel Policy Amendment, but thank you for your concern. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, thank you, and I think Commissioner Isbell, as Chairman of Operations, has said that we will be discussing COVID at all of our operations committee meetings, and it will cer- I'll certainly bring it up again at, uh, at operations, although I'm not on the operations committee, but I can bring it up, and someone else can make a motion if they're agreeable.
Commissioner Mead?
Uh, Commissioner Mead here. I, I need to point out, however, that the, the governor, of course, has the authority to issue orders for private, you know, for public citizens to wear masks in any places he wants to, and he has, he has given the county mayors the authority to make those decisions in their counties, with the exception of few counties that have full-blown health departments. Uh, but I would point out that the commission does not have the authority to require private citizens to wear a mask anywhere. The courts do. I have no problem with that thing about the third floor and people going to the courts. The courts certainly have that, that authority, but the governor, uh, who, who has that authority has not delegated it to county commissions, only to county mayors.
Commissioner Waddell?
I'm probably gonna be the only no. I'm kind of used to that by now. Um, I, I would no only because I wouldn't want to mandate someone to not wear one, nor would I mandate someone to wear one. I think it should be a personal choice, and if, if you want to make that choice, that's fine. If, if the mask really worked, and, and you're concerned about it, you wear yours, and don't worry about anybody else. So, appreciate it.
Commissioner Bowe?
And Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, I, uh, not sure if, uh, what Mr. Mead said was agreed to by the law director. Uh, we've got to make sure that our environment is safe for our employees. Uh, that, uh, and the mask, me wearing a mask into the courthouse is protecting you and the other commissioners from my vapors, from my lungs, and, and keeps me from spreading it to other people. That's one of the reasons for the mask. They are masks that do protect you from breathing, uh, but wearing a mask or face covering prevents spreading the virus. Uh, it can be used both ways, depending on what the mask is, but, uh, it's up to us to try to set an example as elected officials for the rest of the county, county residents, or our county employees, and if there's any way we can do that legally, I would certainly support it and press forward with it. Uh, I strongly believe that we need to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Bowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jay, I guess I'm just asking procedural question. Are department heads unable to make this policy for their own departments as we sit here now today? Do we need this added to our policies?
I believe so. Uh, some are reluctant without some authority to do this. They want to have authority that's written in a personnel policy, and the other issue, again, is paragraph four, that would give the employees on their own the discretion to wear PPE. It takes care of both those issues.
Okay, and, and to move on to Commissioner Creasy's point, and I hope he doesn't get upset with me over this. I love and respect Commissioner Creasy dearly. Had the privilege to sit beside him for a long time on this board, uh, but this is an issue that he and I disagree on. Um, I agree with what Commissioner Mead said. I think the governor has given the mayor the authority to mandate the masks. I believe common sense should always come into play. If I'm going to go into a business that says, "Wear a mask to come into my store", I have a decision to make. Do I want to go into their store and wear a mask, or go somewhere else? And I have that right to make that decision. I do not agree with having a blanket policy that citizens are to walk in our courthouse wearing a mask, uh, and I know we're getting into the weeds on this, and, and I'm sorry, I apologize for that, Mr. Chairman. I, if this is just something to make our department heads feel a little more comfortable with this, then I'm okay with voting for it, but if I think this is opening the door, that we're moving further down the road to mandate them, if I get that impression through the rest of the conversation on this motion, I'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We don't have a motion on it yet, do we?
Yeah, we have a motion to second.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I don't think, I, you know, I, I don't have a problem with someone being at the door and taking temperatures and, and asking them, you know, everybody, if they've been around anyone who's had COVID, if they've got, you know, one of the following 20s, that decides whether or not someone is sick, um, to me is not appropriate. Um, they're good for, for being a security officer, if someone, you know, to keep the people we don't need in the courthouse out. Um, you know, maybe somebody from the health department can be up there if they're gonna be asking questions, but I'd like to ask, um, if we can actually have something published in the newspaper to remind people that when they go into the county buildings, um, perhaps they bring sanitizer, they wash their hands. If they don't feel well, stay home, et cetera, and it's good that we're putting some, looking to put something like this in place to encourage others to use a mask and wash their hands and clean up after themselves and not breathe on each other, but I honestly don't believe any of the elected officials in that courthouse or any of the other county buildings are going to enforce it with their employees, because if they were, they'd be doing it right now. The only thing that is separating a person, um, in the office from a customer on the other side of the counter is a piece of plastic that's got a four-by-ten hole in the bottom of it, and they've found that this virus is airborne, and if any fool on the other side of the plastic doesn't think that they're not- And if any fool on the other side of the plastic doesn't think that they're not able to breathe in a germ or pass one the other way, they've got another thing in common. All I can do is continually stay at the house or stay away from the courthouse. I don't trust it. I don't trust it for being clean enough. I don't trust the employees or the people coming in there. I, I, I think it's good that the employees would be encouraged by putting something in the manual. Unfortunately, making it a mandate, it's not going to happen. You know, Denver, Shane, anybody else that's up there hanging out at the courthouse is, is right about that. But something does need to be put into the manual so that employees can't come back and say, "Well, you didn't tell me it was okay to wear a mask." Or, "I didn't feel comfortable using sanitizer every time I touched the stapler or opened a door." We were just, you know, talking about, um, you know, the what happens and so forth, financially speaking, and I don't want anything like that coming back to us because somebody didn't have a piece of paper in their handbook saying, "Well, you didn't tell me. You didn't tell me I was supposed to be wearing a mask or that because of this COVID thing, I should have been washing my hands." So I encourage that document to be put into our handbook. Sorry, but that's my 20 cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Waddell and Commissioner Isbell.
Let me speak again, just real quick. I do trust our employees. I, I think they've done a great job throughout this whole, this whole COVID. I think we're on a very slippery slope when we're requiring our employees to wear masks, but not the general public coming in. It really does no good. And if what Commissioner Creasy said is correct, that the mask only protects the, uh, the person around, it, it prevents the person who's wearing the mask from breathing out the particles. If it's not, if it's not protecting the person who's wearing the mask, then I don't see that it does really any good if everybody in the courthouse is wearing a mask and the general public is not. Again, I'm not for the general public having to wear a mask. I think they've done a pretty good job about not coming to the courthouse. We've not had any outbreaks until recently. And, and it, and it's relatively small. And, uh, I think that, I think that we're doing a pretty good job.
Josh, I'd just like to throw in a comment, a response to that. It was back in March when all this was starting to come around that somebody came into the courthouse and they were on the third floor and then on the second floor, and the place had to be cleaned. And it was somebody from the outside. I think it was the UT Extension offices, actually. But to say that you, you trust me, I, I don't trust you. I don't trust you, Denver, because I don't know where you've been. I don't know how healthy the facility area that you're in right now is. Therefore, I don't feel comfortable being there. You know, if you do, hey, that's great. Go to the bars and go to the movies and, you know, go to rallies. I don't care. I'm not willing to take that chance. I'm not saying to mandate the employees. I don't want to hear that an employee is suing the county because they didn't know they could wear a mask at work while there was a pandemic.
Everybody feels like they're wearing masks.
Okay, let's, let's move to, this is a commission meeting, not a presidential debate. So let's go to Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me come back to you after Commissioner Isbell.
Really, the only problem I've got with this is we're sidestepping the committee. I know Chairman Denenberg tried her best to get everybody together, but I'm a big believer in, in, uh, everybody knows from what, what we've done to try to help prevent and come up with, with ideas and things to do. But I really think that we need a recommendation from that committee and for them to meet as soon as possible and tell us what they think.
Commissioner Fritz.
We have a recommendation that, uh, came before us and I think there's some effort was put into it and looked at. I was sent home for over six months to work at home before I was even brought back to work, uh, because I'm considered high-risk. Where I work at right now, we are required to wear a mask and anybody who comes on site has to wear a mask. And not only wear a mask, but we have to stay six foot apart. And if we have a meeting, they can't nobody be in more than two people in a room at one time and you didn't, then you have to be six foot apart. And if you don't want to wear a mask, what they tell us out there is that you don't have to, but you don't have to have a job. So, I mean, they, they just come right out and tell you, you know, uh, this is how it's going to be because if, uh, we come out here and we infect someone, you're going to infect the mission of the, uh, the, the, the plant, you're going to infect the mission of the country. And it could have a very adverse effect. So, uh, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to require. And if you want a job, this is what we've got to do to meet the requirements. And, uh, right now, everyone that works, uh, where I work at, uh, right now, wears a mask. We work six foot apart. And, uh, so, I mean, uh, and no one is grapping, no one's complaining. And that applies to everyone. Anybody who come on site, you have to meet the requirements. And for you even come on site, they check your temperature. And then you still have to go through everything. So this right here is an excellent thing that, uh, you know, this group has come forward and I think we need to, uh, protect our employees.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank Jerry Creasy for some very good comments as well as Chuck Fritz. This was done, uh, with the intent of giving, as Teresa Scott pointed out, something in our manual that someone can refer to if need be. They feel that the person who is, um, in charge of their department has not mandated or like other people feel that it's, um, a hoax or it's not something that's really that important or it's not any worse than the flu. Well, if they decide that they want to, um, suit up with PPE, then they're certainly comfortable in doing so. There is no word, as far as I can find, in there for Dr. That says required. Required is not in the context of what was written. So this is all optional. And, um, again, Chairman Isbell, I mean, Commissioner Isbell, I do agree with you that it should go through committee first. But given the severity, and I disagree with Commissioner Waddell, that, uh, things are just okay. They're not okay. We've got too much going on in all of the buildings and all of the areas. And, um, you know, whatever we can do to help, and I know that the cleaning crew and that, Roger and his department are doing the best they can. They are really taking this as seriously as anybody I've known. And I really want to thank them for everything that they're doing and continue to do because he's always trying to keep up on top of, um, the newest and latest, um, things that will kill bugs and germs and viruses. So, other than that, I certainly hope that this will be considered. I wish we had time for it to go back to committee, but, um, I want to thank you for entertaining it tonight.
And, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Isbell.
Let me speak again. And as chairman of operations, because, you know, I, I really want this to be a partnership between commission and the officials. Uh, as chairman, and if the members of the operations committee would allow, we've already passed our deadline, but we could also put it on the agenda and ask to hear from the officials to get their input. Thank you.
I would have no objection to that.
I, I, I agree with that, with that activity. And I particularly feel better about that because I'd like to actually see what this says before I vote on it. And so if it goes to operations, I will, I will second the motion to add it to the agenda in the operations committee, uh, just next week.
Do, do we have them? You want to just make that as a motion?
Yeah, I make that as a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mead?
And I'll.
Second, second by Commissioner Creasy.
Yes.
Any other, just any discussion on this motion? Kim, can you do the roll call?
Yes.
Kaymy.
Hi.
Val. Wondell.
Yes.
Denenberg.
Yes.
Mead.
Yes.
White. Jaeger.
Yes.
Smallridge.
Yes.
Jamison. Creasy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Waddell. Meredith.
Yes.
Isbell. 16 yes, if the motion passes.
Thank you. And any other, is there anything else to, any other discussion on COVID response? I, I would like to say real quick, the libraries, the county libraries opened up this week and I really appreciate the mayor and Roger for, uh, getting the, uh, guest guards Plexiglas up at Rocky Top in Norris on such short notice. That, that helped out a lot.
Also, we have a, we have a third dumpster at the new convenience center now. So that should help out with, uh, with trash on Sunday or Saturday. So that's, that's going to be a big help. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff Trabaka.
And Commissioner Isbell, do you want, you want to talk about the ultraviolet lights in the PSA commercial?
Actually, you'll see, uh, on Channel 95, we did that commercial there and we used ultraviolet light. And what it was showing was how to kill the virus or any germs whatsoever when kids were trunk or treating. I don't know if everybody got to see it, but I think Fisher, uh, Anderson's child was on there and then Andy's children was in there. And, and it was real, real good information and it works. I took one of those wands and actually donated to the Rocky Top Library because when they bring their books in, other stuff you can't spray down. But they can take that ultraviolet wand and clean it. So I'm all for all that if we just, we do it the correct way. Thank you.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Regarding the, regarding those ultraviolet wands, um, are, are the different departments, uh, using those when people are passing money and/or papers across to them? Does anybody know? We'll, we'll save that question for operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I have, I have, uh, this is Bob Smallridge. I have a comment I want to make. You know, there's been a lot, a lot of news in the paper the last few days about COVID-19. Statements like it's as bad as it's ever been in the state. I think the governor said there's a surge beyond all prior surges, you know, much worse than going back to March. I know I've had, uh, several comments, emails and personal contacts and people concerned about our policy here in the county. And I guess this is basically a, a question for the mayor. I just wonder, Mayor, if you've had any further thoughts or consideration about issuing a mask mandate for Anderson County? And I realize, you know, I've just heard a lot of discussion, you know, that this is probably not going to be a popular comment with the rest of the commissioners. But I just feel, based on what I've heard and the concerns in the state, that, that I wanted to make that statement. Thank you. And I guess it was a question really for Mayor Frank about any further consideration or thoughts about issuing a mask mandate for Anderson County.
Commissioner Smallridge, I watch the data on a daily basis. I'm very well-read on the issue. Uh, I continue to believe that health policies, whether it is, um, STDs or addiction or, um, any host of diseases from diabetes, uh, to COVID are best handled through encouragement and education and support for each other. And I do not believe that mandates are productive. And in my own office, uh, my assistant, Leanne, as an example, had someone who threatened to come sneeze on her, um, if we did not do a mandate. That kind of divisiveness is counterproductive. And I, I think if you look at Anderson County's numbers, one of the things I regularly do is compare, um, how we're tracking in Anderson County to other counties our size. We do an excellent job. I don't begrudge anyone. I, I wear my mask when I go into the grocery store. I am more diligent about the hands and eyes because that's my own personal view of how I think, um, COVID is spread. We're diligent, um, in, in the courthouse about cleaning. We do have the ionization that kills 98.6%. But I just think it's counterproductive and it's best handled through encouragement and education. And if you look around our community, you see the majority of businesses recommending and encouraging masks. So, um, I have found that one of the things that, that we have seen is if you look at the cases in our own courthouse, um, to my knowledge, unless there's some recent cases, um, that I haven't been, uh, made aware of, the contact is out, outside of the facility. A lot of times we're finding that these are, you know, with families or, um, when people relax their precautions. And so, you know, it's not, um, I, I also, I, I haven't raised this issue in a press release and, and it's really counterproductive to the discussion. But I also do not believe that a mandate is enforceable. And, um, I have looked closely at the Emergency Powers Act. I communicated early on with Tennessee County Services Association, with the governor's office. I communicate with them regularly. I've shared this privately with the governor. I believe that, um, when the Emergency Powers Act was passed, that the legislative intent is that the governor is in charge during that emergency and he can delegate authority. And my interpretation of that is if the governor cannot distribute 3,000 masks effectively on his own, that Mayor Frank would be tapped or delegated to distribute those masks. Or if there is a flood, um, yes, then Mayor Frank, on behalf of the governor, can put so many sandbags. I do not believe constitutionally that I have the ability to make a decision as a non-health official to, that would have a, a, a ramification for a citizen that has, um, a citation or any kind of criminal penalty associated. I think that is beyond the authority that I was elected and I took the oath to swear, you know, I swore to uphold an oath to defend the Constitution. I just don't believe that as a non-health official, I am able to say, "Dr. Smallridge, um, I say you wear a mask." And then Sheriff Barker, if he does not wear a mask, then cite him and then District Attorney General prosecute. I do not believe that was in the vein of the Emergency Powers Act. And I say that because if you look at the statute on the, these decisions that where. And I say that because if you look at the statute on the, these decisions that where it lies in, in government, it falls under the Department of Health. And this is why you see in those six counties that they have the authority because they have their own health officer and they are able to do that. And that is not a slight, I'm not saying that, and, and the same thing for the other counties that do not have that health officer. We have a health, we have a health officer and that is clearly defined as their, that's in their wheelhouse. That is what they have the authority to do. And we put that in the county's COVID policy. If you'll recall, Kim worked very hard on that back in March and we brought that to operations in April and that was passed. And we did encourage all of these safe practices and tried to put in place the guidance that was necessary for our employees. So I hope that explains a little bit about that, but I don't think because I was elected the county mayor of Anderson County, that I, I have that authority to create a criminal penalty. That is the legislative duty and the legislature said that is the health officer's duty. And so I hope that explains. And so I'll continue to message safe practices and doing the right thing. And I, and I think, you know, the number one thing, and we've seen this happen in the courthouse, people forget, if you don't feel well, you do not come, do not come to work. And we've had, you know, instances where that has happened. So I'm all for all safety across the board, but I, I just, I, I don't believe that a mandate is within my authority and I also don't believe it's wise to mandate from a health standpoint.
Okay, Mayor, I, I appreciate what you said and I appreciate what you've done. I think within the framework that we're working within the county, that we've done a pretty good job, a real good job. I will point out that I think there's some pretty strong evidence across the state for those counties that do have a mandate have much, many fewer cases of positive COVID-19 than those counties that do not have a mandate. So with that, and, and again, I, I appreciate what you've done in the county. I think we, you've done and we've done a pretty good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smallridge. And I do, I will look that up, but I believe that's, that statement is, is kind of grown. Vanderbilt did a study that is with regard to hospitalizations. But, I mean, the first thing I looked at when I went to that study is the study starts on June 1st. And if you look at our area hotspots, so those are the metro areas and, and my theory is that it's all about airports and that's kind of where it came in from outside of our community. And if you look at the Ground Zero case, that's where our COVID case came in Tennessee. That, that is about hospitalizations and I'm not going to argue with the researchers at Vanderbilt, but I do know eliminating that data from March to June, their peaks are sooner than our peaks are in the rural area. And even if you look at Campbell County, which is a vast wide, I, I talk to my fellow mayors on a regular basis and we share best practices and our own challenges and, you know, we, we've got mayors in our group that have done the ma, mask mandate and we have mayors that don't and we all support each other regardless of, of the actions we've taken. And they had more active cases for a while than we did here in Anderson County and they're much smaller. And so there's just so much we do not know about this disease. I try to be on the TMA calls twice a week. I do know there's a lot of work with vaccines. One of the graphs that Mayor Jacobs has access to a little bit more data than we do. So he will share some of that at a regional level. One of the things that was encouraging to me was that in the face of the rising hospitalizations for our region, Executive Woody and I were asking him about the criticality of the cases. So as the cases were rising and the hospitalizations were rising, what did ICU stays look like and what did ventilator use look like? And surprisingly, the ICU and the ventilators were stable and even somewhat downward. And I can't, I'll have to go back and pull that for you, Dr. Smallridge. I can't remember if it was the, I think it was the ventilators that were actually down even in the face of the hospitalizations. So we don't know, we're not doctors and this is one of the things that does frustrate us as mayors, where, you know, there's a lot of pressure on us to make these medical decisions and, and all we can do is be champions and encouragers of, of, you know, the best advice and try to lead people in that direction. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're still, you know, we ran for office, most of us on issues like fiscal management and, you know, providing delivery of services to people. But we'll, we'll continue to watch and do the best we can.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good comments and the word encouragement. And I think that the, I'd like to see the county commission do a resolution to encourage our citizens to wear masks for their own safety and for the respect of those that are around. And if the law director can come up with a, a good resolution that says we as Anderson County elected officials encourage our visitors and our citizens to wear a mask or encourage to wear a mask for their own safety and their family, I'd like to see that done and brought to commission if the law director could do something like that.
Be glad to do that for you, Jerry. That's no problem.
Commissioner Creasy, I, I have no problem myself either with encouraging people to wear them, but I, I would object to the language that it is a lack of respect for your fellow citizen. I don't think that is fair and I, and I also know that, you know, it is prejudging some individuals who do have disabilities and are not able to wear a mask, whether it is because of PTSD or whether it is a heart issue. I do know, I do know one person who is an elected official who wears a medical tag around his neck and cannot do so. And so I don't want it to be something, this again goes back to, let's encourage it, but it doesn't mean we're enemies of each other. It doesn't mean we should prejudge each other in our motives or our health condition or our disability. So if, as long as we're doing it in a way that doesn't include that language, then I, I would be happy to be a signatory to it.
Sounds good. Thank you for your comments, Mayor. As always, you, you've studied the issue very well and always prepared to speak on our issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other announcements or anything that come before commission?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.